Well, good evening all. It is six thirty. It is Monday, October twenty-seventh, and this is the committee of the whole meeting for the City of Walker, City Commission. First is discussion on consent agenda items. Let's jump to traffic signal award recommendation. Our Public Services Director Scott Connors here. If you want to give us the background on it. It seemed pretty cut and dry.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, very easy item. This is for our traffic signals at West River and North Park and also at Alpine and Hillside. You may remember that we combined those two projects from a design standpoint, hoping that we would have a little bit of ability to save some money by only doing this once. We're also trying to do that with construction, so those have been bid out together. And we did, we were in front of you a couple of months ago, in front of the Finance Committee, asking for a little bit more money to make sure that we could pull these together. The good news is that of our two bids, one of them was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars below the engineer's estimate. And so that helps us a ton. Much more realistic cost. And we're gonna be able to make Dan DeVries happy, which makes everybody happy in the building. So we're recommending that you go with Strain Electric for that low bid. Strain's got a great work history with us. They've worked on our stand-out lights. They do a lot of emergency repairs for us. They've been kind of a steady Walker partner and a go-to for all of this electrical type of work, and we recommend that we choose them.
Commissioners, any questions or discussion with Scott?
No, I really do agree, though, that Strain Electric is the best candidate for this, and I know that they've done a great job throughout the City of Walker as other cities that have used them in the past.
Is there any, here and there, we've run into some of the logistics, the backorder issues with some of the polls and so forth. Anything that you're hearing, are we aware of walking into this?
No, we've learned our lesson that this stuff is a good six months away.
Okay.
And I think that actually helps us budget-wise, because it gives us that chance to, if we want to let it slide into the next year, we can. I also believe that it was gonna help us get more bidders, because we went into it realistically. So I was surprised to see that only two companies bid it, but we've actually had a couple of projects like this that were only, we only had one bidder. So I don't know how we, what we do to get the other four or five companies that could do this to bid, but everybody's busy.
Yeah, you've got a good local company that's done right by us with a proven track record, so not an issue. Commissioners, I'm gonna do a quick straw vote. Yay, yay, yay. Commissioner Chase? Yay, yay. We're gonna be unanimous, so no need for you to stay. You're welcome to.
Well, I can stick around just in case anything popped up from the audience. Or if you have questions as well. You've got quite a, quite a light agenda, and if I can help with a question on anything, I'm here.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right. Mr. Rotman, anything on your list right now? Okay. All right. Let's go ahead. I'll start with our deputy clerk. Anything from the clerk's office? Election coming up, obviously.
Yep, just the election will be next week, November fourth, which is a Tuesday. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. And because this is just a school election and not a state or federal, there will not be any early voting held.
Got it. All right, awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
Just a couple of quick things for me. The first being that, obviously, we all had the, or most of us had the pleasure to attend the Fruit Ridge Bridge opening. So just very excited about that. I won't steal anyone's thunder, because I'm sure others have a lot more to say about it. The other thing, I believe Frank's last day is this week. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, yes.
I just will make some brief comment. Fortunately, he's not here today, but it has been a pleasure to work with Frank. I think that many of us will recognize his fingerprints all over the city as we look around at much of the work that he's done in his time, not only in the planning roles, but as assistant city manager. So sad to see him go, but wishing him well on all of the work that he will go on to do outside of our city government.
Awesome. Good, thank you. All right, Commissioner Batbuck. All right, Commissioner Groters.
Fruit Ridge is officially open as of two hours ago. So that's officially open now. They're pulling the last rooms in the next half hour, so that'll be done.
Striping's all set.
Yep.
That's awesome.
All good to go.
Great event. Well done, Friday. Great event. So, even with the band, it's pretty cool.
I'm gonna just kind of tag team on what Steve said. Beautiful ribbon cutting, great weather, which, and considering what we had prior Monday through whatever, with all that rain, I thought that the day turned out great. I've had nothing but good comments from neighbors and the community. Really a fun event. The band, that was a great touch, and just, it was a great event to be attended. Frank, too. I'm gonna miss him. He was a great asset and will be greatly missed by, by everyone.
Yep, awesome. Good, thank you. All right. No, yeah, thank you to everybody on Fruit Ridge. I just shared our, the proclamation from our state senator with Scott for around here for the City of Walker, for all the hard work done in the partnership with the city there. So great job to all. And then just with our city managers absent tonight, a couple of reminders on things for the week. Wednesday night, the stand-out open house at six, begins at six o'clock, I believe, at Station Two. And then Thursday, we have our internal, our ice cream social here for employees at two o'clock, if you were not notified of that. Anybody? Okay, I'll make sh- okay, got it. Okay. Okay, it's on this, so long as you knew about it, you're fine. And then three thirty, encourage there is, my glasses on, Candy with the Cop and Firefighters at the Alpine Meyer at three thirty on Thursday. You're welcome to join me. I committed to being up there for a while. If you're able to, come on up. There is enjoyable time, because it's really people, the residents that we serve come up, and we just were able to have very pleasant conversations. I've not had one bad experience yet, you know, knocking on the wood up here, but it's, it's been really enjoyable. I love being able to interact with that and just a very enjoyable setting, and people are just very positive coming out with that. So Myers has done a great job hosting us, supporting us, and making sure that we have something to share with the residents that come up to see us as well. So all good stuff. So that being said, I have nothing further. It is six thirty-eight. We have nothing else for the good of the order? Okay, all right. We will consider the meeting suspended until seven o'clock? Oh, you do have something, Scott? Yeah, please.
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
Obviously, you can see next door that the library is really coming along. We're kind of at that halfway point. We would like to set up a commission walk-through, once we get to this kind of safe point. So right now stairs are going in and, you know, critical things to keep people safe that might be walking through. But we feel like end of November, beginning of December, we're gonna be ready for that. And I think the first group we want to walk through is the City Commission. We also want to get some of the library staff in there to look around to kind of build the excitement. But in, in doing that, would that be best on a Monday night, maybe before the commission, or during the day? How would you guys like to handle that?
I'll defer to commissioners.
Monday before commission is always generally good. I think people are mentally prepared to make that time available.
I mean, we're gonna lose daylight. You're looking right now at what time it is. You're gonna lose daylight pretty quick, but it's-
We're gonna lose even more on Monday.
Very quickly, very quickly, so.
Okay, I will shoot for either the last meeting in November or the first meeting in December, and we'll get you a good look at what's going on.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, now, Will, and if no one else has, it's six thirty-nine. We'll stand suspended until seven o'clock.
Oh, no, that was me doing calls and everything. Westbound Friday.
Friday? I was gonna say-
Eastbound down to single lane all next week.
It's an Alpha airplane.
Sounds good. Sounds good. We're eighty-three, one, thirty. You're almost there. Did you see?
Seven.
Seven.
You did? I have, I have heard, I have seen no dirt travel. Yeah.
I showed up.
I got a, um.
Yeah.
I have my smaller mom got it. That same day, she got it going, and then two days later, my sister got it. I was like, how does my daughter, family, like, like, who I know, like, nobody I know would sure get it all, got many. I don't want to miss this.
Yeah.
I know it's.
I was like, we have. We have. Sort of.
Mm-hmm. They're awesome.
You're wearing a tie.
Lovely.
Here's mine.
By design.
I'll call this order seven o'clock, Monday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. This is the law pursuit of the commission, uh, regulars of the commission. So I can direct commission of orders to. Thank you.
Uh, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and that we can come together to work for our community. Thank you for our dedicated police chief, fire chief, and public safety staff. And we ask for continued protection as they work to keep our community safe. We give thanks for the successful and safe completion of the Fruit Ridge Bridge and that so many people came together over the years to make it happen. Guide our conversations and give us open minds and grace and humility to work together for the betterment of our, of our community. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, please, uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. If I could please ask our deputy clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner Groters.
Present.
Commissioner Babcock.
Present.
Commissioner Chase.
Present.
Commissioner DeShane.
Present.
Mayor Carey.
Present. And next on the list, thank you for that. If I could please ask for a motion in support for the excuse absence, Commissioner Burke.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
DeShane Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, good to go. Uh, next is the approval of the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five city commission meeting minutes. Is there any discussion or questions on said minutes? Seen, hearing, none, only to motion for approval and support, please.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Chase, who got me over here? Okay. All right, Groters, thank you. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? There is no public, so no public comment. Uh, going once, going twice. There is nobody there. Um, Chase, anything? Okay, making sure. All right, consent agenda. We have two items expenditures in the amount of three million sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy cents. The other is the traffic signal award recommendation that we learned about at the six-thirty committee hole meeting for strain electric. Is there any questions or further discussion on the consent agenda items? Seen, hearing, none, only to motion for approval and support, please.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Good. DeShane, Babcock. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, consent agenda passed. Thank you. Next is the second reading of ordinances. Um, this is the ordinance twenty-five dash five thirty. Second reading to man zoning ordinance and map to rezone property at three seven nine one Lake Michigan Drive Northwest. Again, this is our second reading, and for those unfamiliar, this is right over by the Lake Michigan Trail, uh, Lake Michigan Drive and the trails, Fred Meyer Trail Bridge there. Um, is there any discussion or questions on this? Seen, hearing, none, only to motion for approval and support, please.
So moved.